We call the meeting to order. Let's begin with roll call.
Arciana Olliar?
Here.
Kyle Niederman?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Eric Corran?
Here. Let's move on to a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's been a request on the agenda to kind of flip the order and do the business items first to accommodate Board Member Niederman. So can we review and accept the agenda to have a motion for that with that change?
I move that we accept the change.
I'll second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman? Kyle?
Yes.
Arciana Olliar?
Yes.
Eric Corran?
Yes.
So that will put us with our action items first. So the first thing up is 4.1 Business Services Contract Addendum.
Mr. President, members of the Board, in an effort to retain staff who support the high-quality education offered in LHUSD and combat the ongoing effects of the rising inflation, we are proposing the reinstatement of a one-time 4.5% COLA for all staff during the 2223 school year. Contracts may be amended to reflect increases in salary and benefits as a result of legislative appropriations that occurred after the execution of the contracts. Our employee contracts currently in effect allow an adjustment to be made during the term of the contract, but require that the adjustment be in the form of an amendment. Upon approval, a contract amendment will be sent to all employees. The COLA will be paid out in two installments, one in November of '22 and one in April of '23. Compensation for the 2024 fiscal year will be discussed during the spring Budget Committee meetings with a recommendation to the Board no later than April of 2023. And just to clarify, the 4.5% calculated will be calculated off of the employees' fiscal year '23 position pay only. That does not include in the calculation stipends, overtime, 301, et cetera. So it's 4.5% would be calculated based off of their position pay.
Any discussion?
I also want to make sure, so we are talking about the pay that they're receiving now, which reflects the raise that we approved, and so it's 4.5%.
Correct. That is based on this current year's position pay.
So they get their, whatever we approved before, that's 7%, and this is in addition to it?
Correct. It's a one-time cost of living adjustment for this particular fiscal year.
Can we afford to do that?
We can. We're still utilizing the proceeds from the override. So the override, as it was approved by voters in 2016, with a purpose for that was salaries and benefits, also reducing athletic field participation fees. So while we still do have some funds remaining for the override, we're now in a reduced stage. We're at 2/3 of what we normally would get. There's adequate funding to support this for the year.
Well, I move to approve the item as presented.
I second. Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Arciana Olliar?
Yes.
Eric Corran?
Yes. Let's move on to subject 4.2 Business Services, Division of School Facilities, SFB, JOC, Contract Removal Installation of Basketball Courts.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. In fiscal year '21, the Division of School Facilities, previously known as the School Facilities Board, approved design work for the future removal and/or construction of new basketball courts at Starline Elementary in Ora Grande. Design is now complete and a construction application is in the process of being submitted to the Division of School Facilities. During the design process, the district requested an expansion of the basketball court area at Starline to allow for additional activity space for tetherball, four-square, hopscotch, and other games requiring a playing surface. The district has reviewed the design plans and current contractor pricing with our liaison from the Division of School Facilities. If the construction application is approved, the Division of School Facilities and the district will engage in a joint improvement project where the Division of School Facilities will provide the funding for work relating to the basketball court, damaged walkways, related fencing, et cetera, and the district would assume costs pertaining to the expanded activity space at Starline and activity surface striping at Ora Grande. The proposed pricing and cost share breakdown are attached. Concord contracting would be procured through their One GPA Job Order Contract 18-15 PV-04, and not to exceed is being proposed to cover any change orders to address scope of work changes to either the district or the Division of School Facilities during the construction project. Ora Grande, the breakdown for that school is roughly a not to exceed of around $900,000, paid for through the Division of School Facilities, and the district's portion would be a not to exceed $200,000. Starline Division of School Facilities, not to exceed $750,000. The district's not to exceed $250,000. The project will remain as pending until the Division of School Facilities approves construction and authorizes funding for their portion of the improvement project.
Discussion?
Is this bond money?
Yes, this would be a capital, yeah, any bond or capital funds that were available that would make most sense to use during that particular time. The not to exceeds should be pretty heavily inflated, but with the cost of construction right now, we just don't know. And this kind of will help us to keep the project moving along and not have to come back before the Board unless there are any major unknowns that we have at this particular time that become known during the construction project.
And the other part, could you tell us a little bit about like the Division of Facilities part? What are they?
Sure. So the Division of School Facilities, previously known as the School Facilities Board, they're a state agency, a group that appropriated funds each year by the state legislature, and they hold monies that are specifically to be used to address capital needs at the school sites, improvement projects, HVACs, anything capital-related, where capital funding in years past used to be fully funded by the state, and over the years that took a heavy decrease and hit financially. So the state put together this Division of School Facilities to oversee a pot of money and then distribute it through grant applications to individual school sites.
So a majority of the money is not coming from our pot on those?
Correct.
Which is significant on those.
Yeah, you'll notice in the cost share breakdown on the attached sheets that the School Facility Board is paying for over $1 million as proposed, and our obligation is roughly $150,000 between the two sites.
Motion or discussion?
I would move to accept it as presented.
I'll second, but I do have one more question. So at Starline, it's more of an extensive project because you're expanding, it's still going to include the basketball courts, but it's going to have these other activities as well?
Correct. So the School Facility Board or Division of School Facilities looked at Ora Grande and saw the existing surface intact, but needing an upgrade. So because those facilities were already there and existing, they're going to put them back like-for-like, minus the striping of the hopscotch and those types of courts. But the new, the Starline project is all brand-new construction, and they typically fund just basketball court areas. They have a calculation that, based on however many students are attending, you get X amount of square feet of play surface area. So that would allow for two basketball courts, the expansion to make things a little bit more active for the kids and things for them to engage in, and also making sense, you can see on the design. Could you click on whoever's controlling that? Click on the Starline one for me? So that's Ora Grande. So right there, so that gives you an idea as to, they would fund, they're funding the middle portion, and if we did not expand it out to the concrete sidewalk to the right and the concrete sidewalk to the left, that would be grass area in there. So it'd be extremely difficult to water those areas and then get in there to mow them. It just makes sense to make that whole area straight across a nice activity play area and play surfaces for the kids. So for $100,000-plus investment in that whole area, when you're talking almost $1 million, just the School Facility Board is going to put in there, it was definitely worth it for us to do that, both for the kids and from our side from a maintenance standpoint.
And so you did second, correct?
I did the second.
Okay.
Arciana Olliar?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Eric Corran?
Yes. So that ends the action items. So we're going to go back to the discussion items. 3.1 Superintendent First Presentation Review of ASBA Policy Services Advisories.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. The legislature had a very busy session at the end of the year, so all of these came to us after that session was closed and different laws were passed and things we needed to put into place. So the first one we're going to talk about today is family life education. I want to start by saying that LHUSD does not teach family life education or sex education. This board decided that the only thing we do is at fifth grade, we do teach hygiene to our students. This is not to put family life education back in place. This is simply a piece of, public schools should not refer students to or use any sexually explicit material in any manner except as provided in a governing board-approved sex education program. Again, we do not have one of those. Materials may be exempted from this requirement if the materials meet the definitions in ARS 15-120.02B, and all of those are listed in a regulation. The reason I am presenting this in general is because what this policy does is it lays out that if a future board ever wanted to consider having family life education or sex education, as it's called, there's a lot of detail in how that has to be done. Parent involvement is an absolute must. Parent consent is an absolute must. Governing board approval is required, and this policy lays that out. And I apologize if things are not moving correctly or if something happens on the screen if we don't have internet. But it lays out that the governing board must do these things, provide parents with a meaningful opportunity, require that the meetings of committees are authorized for the purposes of reviewing and selecting course study. But I just wanted to be clear with our board, this is not to put this back in place in any manner. This is simply, if any other board decided they wanted to consider this, this lays out the way that has to be done. And again, this is a first reading, so all of these policies that we're sharing with you today are simply for discussion or discussion between now and the next board meeting before it would ever be adopted. I will share this again at the second reading to repeat, we are not putting family life education or sex education back in place. This is simply the way if a future board ever wanted to consider it. And any questions about that one? The red line is the old policy, which is very, very long, and it would all be stricken. The next policy is about parental involvement in education. This is Parents' Bill of Rights. The governing board recognizes that parents' rights is codified in the Parents' Bill of Rights 1-601, 1-602, and in Arizona's other codifications of parents' rights is stated in Title 15 of Arizona revised statutes. This policy contains, this policy that we're reviewing, a regulation that incorporates the superintendent's detailed guidance in administering this policy, a mechanism to collect and maintain instructional staff background information if any parent were to ask for that, and also just a quick reference to the Parents' Bill of Rights that would be listed by itself, so you could just easily pull that off the website. For the purpose of this policy, parent means the natural or adoptive parent or illegal guardian of a minor child. There are parental involvement procedures. The two new ones that are put in at this time, procedures by which parents have access to the school's library collection of available books and materials, and procedures by which parents may receive a list of books and materials borrowed from the library by their children. The following are exempt from Paragraph C and D. Schools without a full-time library media specialist or an equivalent position, or school district libraries that have agreements with county free library districts, municipal libraries, or other entities pursuant to the subsection. So what that means is that Lake Havasu City is exempt because our schools do not have a full-time library media specialist. However, we do have an electronic system that captures this information. So if a parent were to ask us what list of books or materials their child has borrowed, we can definitely provide that without issue. And Jamie actually is going to talk further about this because it's in other policies that we're going to talk about today, too. But we, our parents also can access the full library collection. They can search that from our website, and then if they did want just a listing of the actual collection, we could also produce that as well. So there's a little more in here, I think. It's 13, just says the right to view, the right to public review of courses of study and textbooks and library books and materials. The right to access all written and electronic records of a school district or school district employee concerning the parent's child pursuant to Section 15-143 and listed in Regulation KBR. The key there is that this lists all of the things that a parent could ask for. So what is in a student's cumulative record? Their attendance, their grades, any discipline. For our students who are tested for special education services, any of those reports that we produce for that process, they have access to all of those things. And this just clarifies it very clearly for everyone what a parent would have access to. This is the section on resumes of all current and former instructional personnel. These are to be maintained and available for inspection by parents and guardians of pupils enrolled. The resume simply includes educational and teaching background and any experience that that teacher may have in a particular academic content subject area. Again, parents means natural, adoptive, or legal guardian. When a parent submits a written request for information, that would come to me or the principal. You have 10 days to deliver that information to the parent or provide the parent with a written explanation for denial of the requested information. If it is denied or is not received within 15 calendar days, the parent may then submit a request in writing to the governing board to get the information. The governing board would then consider the request at your next scheduled meeting, and then as long as it was properly noticed on the meeting agenda, you would formally consider the request. Any questions about that one? KI is Visitors to Schools. Just clarifying that no visit, tour, or observation shall be permitted if it threatens the health or safety of pupils and staff. Parents and prospective parent visitors. We are to develop procedures to allow visits, tours, and observations of all classrooms by either parents of enrolled pupils and parents who wish to enroll their children in the school district. The policies need to be placed on our homepage of our website, so once adopted, we would put all that out there, so any parent who's looking to enroll their child would be able to access that quickly and get a tour scheduled as quickly as we could. And then mask or face coverings are not required. So the district does not require mask or face coverings anywhere on the district's premises except where longstanding workplace safety and infection control measures that are unrelated to COVID-19 may be required. There is no place that I can come up with that we would be touring a prospective parent that would require a mask or face covering. Any questions for that? Okay, we're going to turn the next one over to Ms. Vesta Dail.
The next policy is IHA, the Basic Instructional Program. The addition here is adding September 11th as an observance day and ensuring that part of the day has age-appropriate education about the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001, and that's in addition to Sandra Day O'Connor Civic Celebration Day, which was passed a few years ago. The next policy is IJAL. Dr. Stone referred to this in some of the previous policies that talk about the public review period for library books. And again, we are exempt from this because we do not have a full-time librarian at any of our schools. That, so that policy is further fleshed out in the regulation, IGLR, which talks about that public review period, which we are exempt from. And then it also discusses that parents will be able to access the list of library books or the books that their child checks out. We are also exempt from that, however, because of the way that we have our library books checked out digitally, it's very easy for someone to do, so we're able to do that. The next policy, this is the parental access to library books or materials. The next policy is graduation requirements. This makes a change to the graduation requirements that are, that is related to the citizenship test that students need to take and pass. So prior, sorry, beginning with the class of 2026, that change gets moved from a 60% pass rate to a 70% pass rate, and then it clarifies that the transcript will only note if the student passed or failed. The designation will just say that they failed the test. So pupils can take it in seventh or eighth grade. We currently do it right now in their senior civics class. It's much easier for record-keeping. And then now we need to report that data to the Department of Education, inclusive of the median score, the percentage of students who passed by correctly answering the minimum number of required questions, the percentages of class of students who failed, and then any other related information. And it will be done in a way that's not personally identifiable to the student. The next policy deals with teaching about controversial or sensitive issues. There was an adjustment of words, so it now reads, "As the teacher holds a position of authority and respect in the classroom and community, and by virtue of that position has great responsibility in the formation of the education of all students. It must be clear that personal views are not part of the instructional program and must be tempered by the responsibility to maintain professionalism." And then it goes through how to deal with controversial issues, which has remained unchanged. The next policy deals with ensuring that every school has set aside at least one minute, but not more than two minutes, to engage in a moment of silence. Students may not interfere with other students' participation. Teachers or school employees may not suggest the nature of the reflection in which the student may engage in during this time. Each teacher of a class in which a moment of silence occurs pursuant to law shall encourage parents of students in the class to discuss with them how to best use their time. So again, the responsibility and support of parents is needed on how they would prefer their students to use that moment of silence. The next policy relates to student surveys. Currently, Lake Havasu, if you look at LHUSD, will not administer surveys under ARS 15-117 except for under Subsection D. And so we do not administer surveys except for that specific subsection, which looks at things like information that's related to attending college that would go to the college application, or things that are about classroom activities. So a survey is done in a classroom as a learning activity, and then it excludes questions about some of these things if the student is seeking medical attention. And... Does anybody have any questions about those?
Next is Mr. Moth.
Thank you, and I think you might notice a trend with some of mine. This first one addresses staff health and safety, and includes a statement along the lines of that the school district will not require a resident of this state to receive a vaccination for COVID-19 or any variant of COVID-19, and then it states that we will not impose a requirement to wear a mask or face covering anywhere on school district premises unless it's a longstanding practice similar to the policy we heard of earlier. The next policy relates to student admissions. This one allows county superintendents the ability to designate a school district if a parent requests it, where a pupil who is precluded by distance, lack of adequate transportation facilities, or parent or guardian's employment from attending a school in the school district or county of the pupil's residence, or who resides in an unorganized territory, may apply for a certificate of educational convenience. This helps clarify the educational responsibility for a student who may be coming here or going to another district. JICFA talks about hazing. This one removes some of our language and cites the specific statutes which define hazing and what that could look like. JJIA relates to intramural sports. This one clarifies that students can participate in sports based on the biological sex of the student. Students who are females, women, or girls may not, or excuse me, may participate in any intramural athletic team or sport designated as being for males, men, or boys are designated as coed or mixed. So boys can play on boys or coed teams, girls can play on girls, coed, or boys teams. The next policy on interscholastic sports has the same language. For immunizations of students, very similar to the staff wellness policy, addresses COVID-19, and it states that a school district or charter school that requires a person under 18 of age to receive vaccination for COVID-19 or any variant of COVID-19 must obtain the consent of that parent, that student's parent or guardian. We are not requiring this. And then, under immunization procedures, it also says the board authorizes the superintendent to create procedures for verifying immunization records of students, which we do have. JLCC touches on lice, but it also includes a statement about masks, that first one. The district or charter school may require that a mask or face covering be worn by a person under 18 of age only when the express consent of the person's parent or guardian is given. Sorry, there's a fly over here. So we do not require it. And then it takes some of our language out and just simply states, students with, I can't pronounce that word, I'm sorry, lice, shall be excluded from school until treated for that. JLDA adds a statement that school psychologists who are employed or contracted with a public school must be certified by the Department of Education, but do not have to have the license. licensure through the Department of Health or another organization, but that they do have to have it from the Department of Ed. Are there any questions on any of those for me? Thank you.
I actually do have a question. So the licensure, can you, can you explain that part to me again? So it's, as long as they're certified by the Department of Education, that's fine. But the licensure would come from which department?
So there, there's. Sorry. There's different types of licensures. A psychologist can be licensed by, I don't know the actual term, like the Board of Health from the state, or they can be licensed by the Department of Education. We require the Department of Education version. So they still complete that education, just the, like practicum requirements are a little different, the testing is a little different. So they're licensed school psychologists by the Department of Education, but they may not be licensed for private practice, for example.
Thank you.
Policy DIA accounting system. This outlines required actions to assume accounting responsibility. Currently, there are many districts throughout the state who are tied to their county school superintendent's office and the county to reconcile with them their financial statements, our own financial statements. The county will issue our checks and warrants. So if we ever were to move away from that to where we assume the accounting responsibility completely in-house and not reconciling our transactions with that, that agency, there's a process in which it outlines how to do that. The addition there is they included language to also develop and file with the county school superintendent. And it gives an exact date telling in which, how, how to do it and when to do it. So before January 1st is when that action must take place. So when we have to develop and file a plan with the school board, State Board of Education, and the county school superintendent. Right now, we have no plans to move away from the county this time. Section EE Transportation Services. This provides additional language as to the types of vehicles and services that may be appropriated, the funds may be appropriated towards. The allowable vehicles is the major addition there and clarifying that, that a vehicle must be designed to carry at least 11 passengers, but not more than 15. It explains that a bus or a vehicle must be a type A or a type B school bus, which that's just the size in which the bus is actually developed from the factory. It's a cutaway front, front engine type of a bus. Usually it looks like a van conversion from the front, so it's a much shorter bus. They're providing just some clarifying language to make it to where it is allowable to use those vehicles. However, there's a lot of discussion happening right now, and additional information being sought, not only by districts, but also by our insurance carriers throughout the state to figure out exactly the, the exact details into that. There's a lot of controversy. There was a, an accident that just happened not too long ago, the northern part of the state. There's a lot of controversy in going towards these smaller vehicles and transporting students, a lot of concern. So I think that this is still going to be something that will continue to develop and definitely continuing to receive clarification on those requirements in additions to policy. Policy EEA EA outlines, just basically provides additional information as to the qualifications of a bus driver. Talks about the bus endorsement, and it has to be issued by the Department of Transportation. There also needs to be a bus certificate issued by the Department of Public Safety. And then licensure for vehicles. It states that the driver must be appropriately licensed, depending on the size and class of the vehicle. Any questions?
So those are all the policies for the first read. As you know, if you have any concerns or want to have any discussion about that between now and the September meeting, any of us are available to do so. If members of the public have questions, this is available on, on our website. They would go to Board Docs, they would go to this meeting, they can review all of these. They may reach out to you with comments, and if you would just share those with us. Or they can certainly reach out to us, and we would also share them with you before we come back for the second reading in September.
I definitely appreciate the work that goes into this. I know with the state legislature and changes each year, it's always hard to keep track. I appreciate all the work that goes into keeping track of those. And I look forward, as you hear, transparency is key in all of these. So I always want to just make a mention to a public, if they're listening in, we do want to hear from you. We are very approachable. There's ways to contact us or any of the directors. So please feel free to do so. So next up is our announcements, announcements, there it is. So Subject 5.1, Student Achievement, Public Curriculum Adoption Stakeholders Meetings.
So the meetings are listed for our social studies and science adoption that we are getting ready to go through this school year. The first meeting is November 9th. Second meeting is January 23rd for social studies. First meeting is November 10th. Second meeting is January 18th for science meetings. And then our, all of the curriculum materials will be on public display for 60 days, beginning December 8th, 2022. And again, as we did with English and math, we encourage anyone in the public to please come and review the materials and share your comments. We do read those, we do take them into consideration. So we would just, they will be available over in, in the little room here, and we would love to have community input.
Is there, is it still time for any of the community members to be on the, the stakeholders meetings? Or are those pretty much already filled in?
We have not formally sent out invitations for stakeholder meetings. So if there is somebody that's interested in being in the stakeholder group, that would be excellent. They just need to get ahold of me. And then also, it's still open to the public. So even if someone is not officially on the meeting, they're still welcome to go.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're coming to 6.1. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Arjana Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Goran?
Yes, we're adjourned.